I will call to order in June meeting, the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board, and ask our Secretary Marty to do a roll call.
Okay. Member Ocharia. Vice Chairman Langston.
Present.
Member SAC.
Present.
Member Toterai.
Present.
Member Michael.
Present.
Member Robuck.
Present.
And Chairman Pritchard.
Present.
The quorum is present, Chairman.
Thank you, Marty. And this evening, since Sanjay can't be with us, we're going to ask Josh Michael to be our voting alternate. First item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda, and I'd look to somebody to propose formally that we adopt the agenda unless anyone has any changes they wish to make.
Just as a reminder, please type in the chat box if you'd like to make a motion.
So I have a motion to approve the minutes from Member Michael and seconded by Vice Chairperson Langston. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And then it's Marty to do a roll call.
Okay. Vice Chairman Langston.
Ah.
Member Michael.
Aye.
Member SAC.
Aye.
Member Toterai.
Aye.
And Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, Marty. So we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Anybody have any changes or corrections to the minutes from the May meeting? Hearing none, detecting none. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the May 14th meeting.
Dylan.
Motion from Member Toterai, seconded by Josh Michael. All in favors, I guess we'll just do the roll call.
No, sorry.
Thank you, Marty.
Okay. Vice Chairman Langston.
Ah.
Member Michael.
Aye.
Member SAC.
Aye.
Member Toterai.
Aye.
And Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, Marty. So we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Anybody have any changes or corrections to the minutes from the May meeting? Hearing none, detecting none. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the May 14th meeting.
Dylan.
Motion from Member Toterai, seconded by Josh Michael. All in favors, I guess we'll just do the roll call.
No, sorry.
Thank you, Marty.
Okay. Vice Chairman Langston.
Ah.
Member Michael.
Aye.
Member SAC.
Ah.
Member Toterai.
Aye.
And Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
All right. The motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Move on now to public comment. I see nobody physically here in Town Hall. Do we have any email or any input from the public?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to move ahead to item six, which is new business with public comment, and ask Michelle to introduce that topic.
Thank you, Chairman Pritchard. At the retreat this January, staff initiated a discussion with Town Council about a number of potential amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance. Some of those related to potential process changes, and that's what we are bringing forward to you tonight. But they did discuss a number of changes, and I'll get into that a little bit more this evening. After discussing different options, we were directed to bring forward code amendments to you, and this is the first that you'll be seeing of a series of amendments that we will be bringing before you. So the proposed amendments that are up for your consideration tonight relate to the review process for special use permits, the process for review of some of your administrative applications, and the proposed transfer of the BOA duties to the Planning and Zoning Board. Just as additional background, as we were discussing these items with Council, some of the main topics or items that we kept going back to had to do with streamlining processes, making the best use of town resources, and complying with some general statute changes that are coming online in 2021. Amidst some of those discussions, we also talked about existing processes and what the value add or benefit may be in relation to some of those processes. Before I get into special use permits, just to remind the Planning and Zoning Board, the state legislator adopted what we're referring to as 160D last year, and that was really a rewrite of North Carolina's land use laws. So that happened earlier this year, and it happened in two parts. Part one is effective now and was seen as general clarification and not really substantial changes. There were some amendments that came before you earlier this year that were related to those part one amendments, and really the only parts of our UDO that we had to change related to the resubmission timeline and updating some of our definitions to comply with state law. The part two amendments are much more substantial. They take effect in 2021, and we are working on that update now. But there is one item kind of in the part two amendments that we're bringing forward to now separate from the rest because we thought it made sense in light of the other process changes that are being proposed, that those could all be looked at more holistically. And that change that's coming online in 2020, the new statute will not allow anything that happens at an advisory board meeting in relation to a special use permit to be considered in making a decision on a special use permit. So essentially, special use permits are going to need to be reviewed by one body. So that is one of the first items that we brought up to the Town Council. We presented them with a couple of different options and essentially asked them who they wanted that power to lie with, and they did indicate that they would like to keep that authority at the Town Council level. So the first proposed change would remove the Planning and Zoning Board from the special use review process, and that review would then go before the Town Council only. Another item that was discussed probably more at length was some of our administrative review processes. And as all of you know, we do send some administrative reviews through the Planning and Zoning Board and through Town Council, and others are reviewed at the staff level. And those are really major site plans and subdivisions. So with the subdivisions, we have type one and type two subdivisions, and there was general consensus that there's a benefit to keeping that process as is, and so no changes are proposed to the subdivision review process. That means that the Planning and Zoning Board would still be involved in the review of subdivisions for new single-family developments and new town home developments. What we are proposing to change, though, is the administrative review process for major site plans. So as a reminder, these are the uses in your principal use table that have a P and an asterisk by them. We have two types of P designations, I would say, in the principal use table, and if it's a straight P, it's a minor site plan review, and if it's a P with an asterisk, it's considered a major site plan, and it goes through an additional process. In any event, if there is a P in the use table, those uses are legally permitted by right, and as you know, if all UDO requirements are met, the application must be approved. So just to give you a little bit more background about the review process that those applications go through before they hit you, generally speaking, we average four reviews per application before we get to the point at the staff level where we determine that all code requirements are met. And at that point, if it is a major site plan, it would get scheduled for Planning and Zoning Board review. That process at the staff level probably takes about four to six months, and it could depend on a lot of things. It can depend on the number of comments, the responsiveness of the applicant's comments, and how long it takes them to turn around and resubmit plans. But generally, you're looking at about four to six months. And then once again, if it's a major site plan, at that point, we're scheduling it for Planning and Zoning Board and Town Council. That Planning and Zoning Board and Town Council review process adds about two to three months to the process. And I think there is some question of what are we getting, you know, out of that extra two to three months that we are adding on when, at the end of the day, the application does need to be approved? And so we had some discussion about, we talked about value add at retreat. So what is the value add? What is the benefit of the existing process? One of the things that we did hear related to transparency and related to making information available to the public so that they know what's going on in town. I think I would argue that there are other ways to do that, and we do have the new development map on our website. But when Council directed us to make a change to get rid of the major site plans, it was with the commitment at the staff level that we would work with our communications department and find other ways to make sure the community is informed about what is going on around town. And we have started those discussions with our new PIO officer who started a couple weeks ago. Personally, and I did say this at the retreat, I also do think it puts everyone kind of in a bad position. When you are sending an application through a review process, there is a perception that the Planning and Zoning Board, that the Town Council have the ability to deny that application. And so I do think it creates some confusion among the citizenry when something is going through a review process that really, if this is a permitted use and it complies with the code, at the end of the day, there's little you could do with it, and you do ultimately have to approve it. We also talked about the time involved in going through that process. So as I said, it takes two or three additional months of the applicant's time. They are often also bringing engineers, architects, attorneys to meetings, which is additional cost as well. At the staff level, any time that we bring something before you or any time that we bring something before Town Council, it takes several hours to prepare those agenda items, and there are multiple people involved in those review processes. And so when we look at the use of staff resources, there are other projects and initiatives that are also important to the town that we could be spending time working on. And we are taking up the Planning and Zoning Board's time, and we are taking up Town Council time. So those are some of the reasons that we brought this up at retreat. We did offer some different options to the Town Council, but ultimately were directed to proceed with initiating an amendment that would essentially eliminate the distinction between minor site plans and major site plans. And if there is a P in the chart, it would go through a staff review only. As all of you know, we are in the process of updating our land use plan, and when we are done updating the land use plan, it's anticipated that we're going to go through a zoning or Unified Development Ordinance rewrite so the Unified Development Ordinance matches the plan. That means at that time, we're going to be taking a very close look at the principal use table, and I would argue that where we put those Ps and where we put those Ss or where we don't put anything and say it's just not allowed, that is probably a better place to concentrate on because those become very important, very vital decisions. So I will, oh, on the overhead, also kind of pointed out to you, we thought you might be interested in seeing what types of developments are currently identified in the code as major site plans. So I'll just touch on those briefly. Duplex developments, arguably that creates a distance center for duplexes, which are one way to meet affordable housing needs because there's additional time and process involved in those. Attached single family, they do have a P and asterisk in the chart, but unless that's a standalone building, you are still going to see it as part of a subdivision. And then multifamily over 50 units. As you could imagine, a lot of the discussion at retreat kind of went to that multifamily category because that's where we see a majority of our major site plan applications. We do also have a number of non-residential uses that are currently identified with a P asterisk that are also major site plans, and that varies from district to district. So there's a list of them on the overhead, place of worship, schools, hospitals. Whether or not those are a minor site plan or a major site plan depends on where they are in town, so what zoning district they're located in. And in some parts of town, they're a minor site plan and just go through staff review, and in other zoning districts, they're a major site plan and they come to you. So there is a little bit of inconsistency there. But I will move on to the Board of Adjustment. So as I indicated earlier, one of the proposed amendments would essentially dissolve the Board of Adjustment and transfer their responsibilities to the Planning and Zoning Board. And we are proposing that that occur at the end of August when five of seven of the members' terms expire. Currently, the Board of Adjustment is charged with reviewing variances and administrative appeals, so those are both quasi judicial decisions. When we went back and looked at the case history of the Board of Adjustment, the last case that they reviewed was in 2015, and that was a requested variance. We go back to 2010, they've reviewed a total of three variances and two appeals since Nonetheless, on a monthly basis, we are communicating with the BOA. They meet as needed, so circling back with them every month to let them know if there will be a meeting or not. And they do have two to three meetings a year. Those are generally trainings conducted by either staff and/or the town attorney, or meetings where they are making recommendations on officers and adopting their calendar as is required by code. So there is still some staff's time and support that goes to the Board of Adjustment, but they have not reviewed a case since 2015. I think simply stated, you know, the feeling was that the workload and the volume just wasn't there to warrant maintaining the Board of Adjustment as a separate body. And state law does allow the Planning and Zoning Board to act as the Board of Adjustment. That law has been in place for a number of years. With the 160D update, it's being adjusted slightly, but I'll read that language from the 160D update, which says the zoning or Unified Development Ordinance may provide that the Board of Adjustment, Planning Board, or Governing Board hear and decide quasi judicial zoning decisions, and then it goes on to talk about quasi judicial procedures, which you're familiar with because you do currently review special use permits. We did have a meeting with the Board of Adjustment last night. We notified them a couple weeks ago that this proposed change was coming, and even in light of COVID, I think everyone felt it was important to give them an opportunity to meet in person and ask any questions that they might have. They did, four of the seven members were present last night, and they did ultimately adopt a motion indicating that they disagreed with the recommendation. The reason for the disagreement really went back to separation of powers between legislative, judicial, and executive branches of government, and I'd say it was probably more, you know, that philosophy of maintaining the separation of powers. Staff obviously has, sees that a little differently. So right now, quasi judicial applications, they are permitted by state statute to be reviewed by other bodies. Right now, the Planning and Zoning Board and the Town Council are involved in the review of special use permits, special use permit applications and alternate equivalent compliance applications, both of which are quasi judicial. So both bodies already are serving in a quasi judicial role. And we did talk to the town attorney before we even brought this forward as a potential discussion item at retreat to make sure that he did not feel that there was any conflict of interest if we were to bring this topic up for discussion. He indicated he did not. I think some of the BOA members do believe there to be a conflict, so just want to touch a little bit on what variances are and what appeals are. So administrative appeals are not an appeal of a decision that has been made by the Planning and Zoning Board or the Town Council. Anyone that wants to challenge a decision of the Town Council, that would go to court. So you are, as the Planning and Zoning Board, involved in the making of laws. You review text amendments like you are now. That is legislative. That is the making of law. Any challenge as to whether or not that law is a valid law, that law is a constitutional law, that challenge would go to court. What the town is able to review in terms of appeals is appeals of staff decisions only. So those are decisions made by the planning director or town engineer as it relates to the Unified Development Ordinance or the code enforcement officer. Probably the most common type of appeal is an appeal of an interpretation from the code. But this would be a staff decision, so we do not believe that there would be any conflict because you would not have been involved in the discussion of that interpretation. Variances are not applications, once again, questioning the validity of the law. Those are applications where someone is asking for an exception or a variance from the law due to a unique circumstance or a hardship that they have. So for example, someone may come before you saying that they cannot meet the required step back on their lot, and it's due to unique circumstances that aren't generally applicable to others. They have an unusual lot shape, there are environmental features, there's unique topography. Much like special use permits, there are findings that need to be made to determine those variances. So that's just a little bit of background about what a variance and what an administrative appeal is. And all of you are familiar with quasi judicial processes, the process, the public hearings, evidentiary hearings, that is all the same as what you are doing now for special use permits. So I think, you know, kind of thought that you were a natural fit to pick up and take on those duties because you are familiar with those legal processes. The one thing that is different about variances and administrative appeals, however, is that the body that reviews them has final decision-making authority. So if there is a challenge of a variance or an appeal, that goes to Superior Court. It does not go to Town Council. And it's one of the reasons that we've continued with trainings of the Board of Adjustment because if a case is presented before them, it's vitally important that they are familiar with meeting procedures, rules of conduct, making motions, reviewing plans. And arguably, one training a year may not be enough when you're not accustomed to doing those sorts of things. So that is a little bit of background on the Board of Adjustment change and kind of what staff's thought process was, what some of the discussion with Town Council in respect that was. So this slide then just kind of provides an overview of kind of what those process changes would look like. So major site plans would go away, and then you see a long list of things that continue the same. For the Planning and Zoning Board, you would no longer be involved in the review of special use permits or alternative equivalent compliance applications, but you would assume the responsibility for variances and appeals. There are a couple other changes in the proposed amendments that I did also want to point out. There is a proposed amendment to allow administrative government services as a permitted use in the Historic Crossroads Village zoning district. That is really to accommodate former fire station number one at Morrisville Carpenter and Chapel Hill. The town is looking at potential reuse options for that building. And then another proposed amendment to allow security fencing plans to be submitted for non-conforming industrial uses. We are at the staff level right now allowed to approve security fencing plans in the Industrial Management zoning district. There aren't many of them that have been approved, but that allows additional height, chain link, sometimes barbed wire, if there is a unique need and it doesn't adversely impact other properties. We do have some non-conforming industrial uses in places that are not zoned IM that have some sensitive materials on the property where this could come in useful. And then I said earlier that we're looking at other code amendments coming forward, so I just wanted to touch base on those so you had an idea of kind of what you would be seeing in the future. And we are still working on the sign code update. Do need to wrap that up. And then, at least at the staff level, we provided a presentation to Council with a list of amendments that, at least at the staff level, we thought we might want to start looking at, and they were very high-level, almost topics to be discussed, not specific ways to amend the code, but we're having issues with X, Y, or Z. After going through multiple sections of the code, access and circulation and landscaping, tree preservation in open space very quickly came to the top of the Town Council's list as priorities for amendment. And we were directed to work on access and circulation first, that is TIA's and cross access. We are in the process of drafting those amendments and had actually planned on bringing them to you when we brought forward these other changes, but that was a little complicated with COVID because we really feel that stakeholder engagement in that one is very important. And with remote meetings, thought it might be more digestible and probably even better to separate those. But access and circulation are in progress, and after we're able to figure out that stakeholder engagement, I don't think it will be too long before you'll be seeing those. After those, we're moving on to landscaping, tree preservation, and open space because there's a lot of relationship between those. We also have the general statute update that we need to work on, and then there will be an update to the UDO after the land use plan is adopted. And once again, that's when we are potentially looking at a townwide rezoning, and we're taking a very close look at that principal use table. So as a reminder, there are two items that you are being asked to review this evening. The first is a resolution pertaining to the adoption of a plan consistency review statement, and the second is an ordinance approving the text amendments themselves. And before I finish- And once again, that's when we are potentially looking at a townwide rezoning and we're taking a very close look at that principal use table. So as a reminder, there are two items that you are being asked to review this evening. The first is a resolution pertaining to the adoption of a plan consistency review statement. And the second is an ordinance approving the text amendments themselves. And before I finish up and open up the floor to questions, I did want to acknowledge Dylan Brockos and Ben Howe. They really did all the heavy lifting on this. They wrote the briefing, prepared the materials, did all of the red line text. So they really did all the beside, behind the scenes, you know, heavy lifting work on on this. And Dylan is here this evening to assist with any questions and also to help with meeting logistics. And long-range planning manager Ben Howe is on the line as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. So I'd like to tease this apart if I may. The three items, the major and minor site plans, Board of Adjustment, and special use. And I'm going to suggest that we do number three first, special use. Unless anybody wants to argue with the state legislature in this forum, I think we're pretty much committed to have to accept that one as is. But let me throw that open to anybody who'd like to comment. If you would raise your chat box or whatever it is that we're using. So no comments from Chris here and apparently none from the remote members. So wonderful, we've done a third of it already.
I think the other two might take some time.
I'd like to discuss the Board of Adjustment dissolution. And one of the reasons that I wanted to be physically present in the Town Hall was just in case anybody wanted to come, particularly from Board of Adjustment, to make their feelings known. I know their workload hasn't been huge, but they've had to be very conscientious people and come to training and be prepared to deal with pretty complex issues. So I take this opportunity of acknowledging the work that they've done. And then ask any other member here if they would like to comment on that item. Start with Chris, any comments?
My comment would be, I think it's good to dissolve. I served on that board for a short period of time and we did not meet. I understand the duties that they perform and I think that would transfer here. And I also agree with the balance of the administration handing back to the city because really it's just reviewing approved documents and changes. And again, I've worked on both sides with that and have been part of technical teams that had to come to cities and very time consuming. So I think those are good changes from dissolving the other board as well as moving the duties back to the city.
Thank you, Chris. Any other members like to comment, particularly on the Board of Adjustment change? So hearing none. We'll move on to the other item, which is the site plan issue. Chris, I think you already commented, appreciate that. Any other members wish to comment on that proposal that we will no longer review major site plans? So Vice Chairperson Langston, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Peter. So I guess my main concern is how I'm getting some bad feedback here, huh? Okay, well, I guess I'm gonna have to deal with the feedback. So I know the, it was brought up that the people seem to think that they had like a veto power that could come before us in the board. And I wonder if while that may be a problem, this could exacerbate the problem. Because now it would seem like developers can just run rampant and there's no point of anyone ever bringing up anything against it. So I guess while I can see what they're saying from the staff, that's just my only concern and maybe we need to somehow do some outreach or something to let people know. I don't know.
Okay, thank you, Lee. Any other comments? Member Michael, Josh, go ahead.
I had a similar comment to what Lee just said. And it's always been my understanding that specifically on administrative stuff that the PZB can help some staff recommendations and maybe add a little weight when staff recommendations are made for new site development. So I think that it's going to seem to kind of re-ask what Lee said. It may seem like the site plan can just now move forward without any type of oversight. So I'm just, I guess I'm a little concerned that maybe some citizens might be concerned that the council might just be looking to increase tax base and there won't be any oversight of, you know, looking out for like, for example, stormwater drainage or something like that.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Tim or Michael, you wish to comment?
Yes, this is Tim. I have a question, just it was mentioned around this looking at the land use plan and the principal use table being reviewed at that point and maybe the list of things that are noted in that changing. Perhaps the staff could give you just a refresher on the timing of when that would be complete and the likelihood of that adjusting. I think if we can maybe narrow the number of things that are subject to the quick approval without the comment, that would be helpful. So maybe just a quick refresher on that.
Michelle, can you focus on that?
Yes, so land use plan update. The full draft plan is in what we call an 80% form right now. And we're working on reviewing that 80% draft with a consultant and planning on bringing that before you in July or August. So it will come before the Planning and Zoning Board and the Town Council will get additional public input on that 80% draft and then come back to with a final document for formal review and consideration and eventual adoption. So we're not looking at adoption until sometime now in early 2021. If we adopt the land use plan in early 2021, you're still looking at what is normally a couple years to do a rewrite of your UDO. It could potentially be done faster, about one to two years. So we are a couple years out from having an updated code and an updated use table. And that is one of the options that we did talk to Town Council about, that we could continue to do this and really focus on that use table when we do the land use plan. But I think that was seen as being still a ways out. It's still a couple years where a lot of people are spending a lot of time on these applications to basically end up with essentially the same application that we had two or three months prior when the staff review was finished. In regard to some of the comments that Members Michael and Langston made, respect those. In terms of, you know, additional oversight, that's where it's important to have your UDO right. You do have stormwater regulations that need to be followed. That is part of the review. If your stormwater code is met, we have to approve the plan. And if we are looking for something additional with these applications, I would suggest we need to look at code amendments to make sure that we're getting that so that we are communicating upfront to our applicants what is expected.
Thanks, Michelle. Chris, do you have any comments on?
I do. I want to say also that related to the other members' comments, I think the city has excellent transparency. And years ago, even 10 years ago, boards served a function when the community didn't have access to the standards or to the drawings. But now that everyone is so internet-based, it's just second nature now that people look at the standards, they look at the code, they look at what's in, what the next plans are coming up. And so I feel very comfortable that that is a check and balance, that people know that this is the process, the process flows are so easy to understand that anybody could walk through and see these are the stages of applications and these are the people approving it. And then they can also attend the Morrisville 101 training where they get to know the people that work at the city on the process. So I think even within the last year to two years, how people can go in and look at everything with the city builds a lot of confidence in some of these changes. And that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Chris. Any other member like to make a comment on this topic? Well, I think we had an example of a major site plan review just last month. And although it might have seemed like a toothless tiger that we had the ability to make a vote and that vote wouldn't really count for anything, I think, to me, it gave us a very good opportunity to discuss things with the developer. And there've been other examples where we've been able to discuss tweaks and changes to the site plan directly with the developer and that they voluntarily have made changes based on our comments and concerns. And it worries me that we will no longer have that opportunity. You know, there is that formal opportunity for a developer to come before the public, which we're standing in for as as board members. Otherwise, you know, once a rezoning has been approved or any kind of zoning has been approved, then a project doesn't really see the light of day until it's built. And I hear your comment, Chris, that, you know, if people are active and interested and motivated, they can seek out the information. But, you know, most people are busy and they're not always looking at that sort of thing. So I think it's, I think it's a potential loss. I understand the staff concern, there's another two or three months, but, you know, that's great for the developer, but I think the public needs a voice here, too. We're charged with looking out for the public interest. Is there some alternative where perhaps the Planning and Zoning Board could get involved at some stage before things are in, have turned to concrete, before they've actually started to be built? Can we be part of an informal review, an informal discussion with developers?
Town Council asked some similar questions. And some of the discussion of that meeting had to do with getting information out to the public so there's more awareness of what's going on and that they could go to as a resource in case they wanted to call someone up and have a discussion about the plan. So as part of this, that's where we're looking at getting that information out in different ways. We've talked about potentially updating your monthly newsletter, doing something in our quarterly newsletter that's coming back out. Our new public information officer knows what the goal is and should be getting back to me next week with some ideas and potential strategies for doing that. But we did hear from them that, you know, if possible, it's nice to be able to pick up a phone and call someone and have that conversation. There have been occasions where an application has gone through a process and suggestions have been made. Sometimes they are voluntarily agreed to by the developer and that's the key, they need to be voluntarily agreed to. I think the one that comes to mind the most to me is small park parks. Those have been with a lot of our subdivisions. We're not planning or proposing to change the subdivision review process. But if you go back and look, what has really been added to some of those plans was a swing set or a slide. I don't know that we've necessarily gotten out of it what was intended. And if there are things like that, that there is an interest in, let's look at the landscaping, the tree preservation, the open space requirements. Should we be requiring something different than we are?
On that particular topic, a developer has the option of either incorporating some open space within their plan or contributing to payment in lieu. And it's been my impression over the years that more and more developers are just finding it easier to just write off a certain number and say, well, that's payment in lieu. We don't have to worry about not being able to squeeze as many townhomes into a certain acreage and so on. And without that public review, I'm not sure that a developer would be, shamed is the wrong word, but, you know, motivated to consider things within their plan as opposed to just paying the money.
And there are pros and cons. So when we get to updates related to those items, tree preservation's a big one, but with common open space requirements, parkland payment in lieu, that parkland payment in lieu oftentimes pays for new parks, greenways, purchased properties to maintain them, you know, and the trees on the property. So that is one part of that. But you could provide options in the code for partial payment in lieu and partial something else. So if there is something else that's important, if you provide X, we'll reduce that payment by Y. Those are the types of discussions we can have when we get to that section of the code.
And on a more general point, well, two things you're considering. One is the changing of the UDO, but that won't happen for a couple of years. The other is a better informational process with a new public information officer, but we haven't tried that yet. So it's kind of like taking the safety net away before we've developed a new safety net. So I'm a little bit worried about removing the obligation to do a major site plan review before we've at least tried whatever this new informational process is or even before we've got to the changes of the UDO, which is one or two, maybe three years away.
Definitely respect that opinion, just for informational purposes. We do plan on having that plan in place before Town Council. So, you know, you'll hear more about the specifics. We have started to add all of our rezonings to our new development map. That was a consequence of every retreat. Nothing's proposed and changed with that process, but just an aside.
Welcome, any other member comments on what we've discussed so far? Seeing none, hearing none. How would the board feel about trying to separate these three items, the special use, the Board of Adjustment, and the major site plan? And how logistically possible would it be for you, Michelle, you and your staff, to do that?
You could do that. I think logistically, it would be easier to do a motion for approval with a condition or caveat that X not be included.
So would you just like to repeat that just so that sinks in?
I would suggest if there- I would suggest if there are one of these things that a majority of the PZB doesn't agree with, that maybe you put a condition on the motion that it includes everything except the changes related to that item. That would maybe be easier logistically.
Thank you. So would anybody like to make a motion?
The chat box is empty at the moment.
So you definition of a deafening silence is an empty chat box? So voting member Michael, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to pass the resolution with the conditional change that the major site plan be excluded.
Thank you, Josh. Do I have a second for that motion?
This is Tim, I second that.
So second from Member Totari. Any discussion of that motion? Marty, as Secretary, to make a roll call.
I'm gonna call the roll for the vote. Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Michael.
Aye.
Member SAC. Member SAC.
Aye.
Thank you. Member Totari.
Aye.
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
Okay, the motion was approved unanimously.
And then we do also need a motion on the resolution adopting the consistency statement.
So as Michelle points out, we need a motion as described on the presentation currently.
And once again, we have an empty chat box, there we go.
That was from me, by the way, I didn't put my name right, it's Ken.
Thank you, Ken, please go ahead.
Just, is this the consistency statement that Michelle sent around a little bit before the meeting?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. As required by General Statute 160A-383, I hereby move to recommend approval of Resolution 2020-169-0 of the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the adoption of a planned consistency review statement and text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to development review process changes based on the following. The proposed text amendments amend the regulations in various sections of the Unified Development Ordinance. These revisions support the following goals in the Town Land Use Plan. A, Policy 2D, clearly communicate the character of development that is encouraged in the town, including land use, design, and development standards, utility extensions, and transportation needs design. And B, Policy 5F, ensure the availability of information and the transparency of town government actions and functions and the following objectives in the Town Strategic Plan. C, Objective 2.4, establish a planned approach for redevelopment and revitalization. And D, Objective 5-2, deliver customer-focused service. And E, Objective 6.2, economic prosperity, support new and existing businesses by streamlining processes and minimizing complexities.
Thank you, Kenneth. I was second to that motion.
There's a comment from Vice Chairman Langston.
Okay, Lee, I think you had a comment as well, would you like to go ahead?
Yeah, the comment is that unless we modify this, we're approving all three.
With the consistency statement, that would not be the case because you have made a motion to adopt with changes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Lee.
Then I will second it.
So I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion of the motion? If not.
Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Michael.
Aye.
Member SAC.
Aye.
Member Totari.
Aye.
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
The motion to approve the consistency statement is approved unanimously.
Thank you. So that leads us on to, Michelle, you're still standing at the podium, thank you. Item seven.
So staff report, just go over the May 2020 activities in the PZB newsletter. So again, we had no new development applications submitted in May or no new administrative approvals that were granted. Town Council did approve an renovation for a property at 610 Airport Boulevard. And that's the site of a new Wood Springs Hotel that is proposed. That hotel is at the very tail end of that review process and we expect that to be approved shortly. Town Council did also approve the UDO driveway spacing text amendment that you initially reviewed a while ago before COVID and wanted to announce that the Planning Department has won yet another award for the land use plan update, even though that update continues to be in progress. That was an award from the American Planning Association Technology Division, once again for some of the imagery used in the sub-area plans, particularly the town center. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Michelle. Board comments, let's start with Chris.
No additional comments?
None? That was easy. Lee Langston, Vice Chairperson, any comments?
Congratulations on the award and thanks for their work with this weird system.
And thank you to all of you for being so flexible.
Member Kenneth SAC, any comments?
Member SAC, are you muted by chance?
I was, I'm sorry, no comment.
Thank you, Kenneth. Member Tim Totari.
A no comment.
And alternate and now voting, Member Josh Michael, any comments?
No comment.
Thank you. So I echo the congratulations for a second award, our award-winning planning department. And thank the folks, including Ben Howell, who's been listening in the background and participating remotely, and Dylan, and Marty, and Martha for being here, and Michelle, thank you very much. You've made it work. It's been an interesting process. So I think we're ready to move to item 10. If somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn. Vice Chairperson Langston.
I move we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Kenneth SAC. We need a roll call?
Okay, last roll call. Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Michael.
Aye.
Member SAC.
Aye.
Member Totari.
Aye.
And Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn is approved.
So we are adjourned, thank you all very much.